It's 7 o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Karen, can you please take a roll call for us?
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Keen? Commissioner Keen? I see him. Commissioner Keen?
I'm here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Batty?
I'm here.
Chair Langness?
Present. We have a quorum. This meeting is going to be held remote today as we have held a number of them over the last couple of months due to COVID. I will have all votes tonight be done by roll call. If someone wishes to speak, I ask that you raise your hand up in the air so it's clear to me that I can call on you and we're not talking over each other. And if anyone shuts off their video, you can just send it in the chat and I will try to call you in the order we received. The next item on the list is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask all those able to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Next is approving the agenda. Is there a motion for the agenda? Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, I would like to amend the agenda to allow for a comment period regarding the and I'm having trouble getting that my my agenda fired up here. The agenda item, I would like to allow public comment for one of the agenda items regarding the sorry. There, the conditional use permit.
Okay.
And it would be agenda item six.
Number six. Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call on the agenda?
I didn't see who seconded that. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Miller did.
Miller, thank you. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five on the agenda is approving the planning commission meeting minutes from the 27th, 2020. Is there a motion? Commissioner Batty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Miller seconds. Is there any discussion on the commission meeting minutes from the 27th? Seeing none. Karen, can you take a roll call, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six is the conditional use permit at 4470 220th Street North, Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage. And we did add, so for those in the audience reviewing our agenda, it is not on there because we added it on the approval. A public comment period, we will do that very similar to the public hearings later on. And staff can outline just prior to that portion how we will bring you up. But if you just note in the comment piece or raise your hand at that time, we'll be able to to bring you up and have you speak to to the mini storage. Donovan, did you want to go over all three of these items, number six, seven, and eight simultaneously?
Yeah, I think that because they're all interlinked, yes.
Okay, they will require separate motions if the commission so chooses and we will give the developer or the applicant an opportunity to speak before the public comment period as well. Donovan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to present the conditional use permit application, planned unit development application, and comprehensive plan amendment application for the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage, proposed to be located at 4470 220th Street. That is on the west side of the freeway on Everton, just north of the MinDOT yard and south of Gateway Green. This, of course, is a application that the planning commission has seen before. And following the May 26 meeting, we received guidance from planning commission to provide some direction to the applicant, Dick Biagini and his architect Jerry Anderson. And I provided that, you know, based on my reading of commissioner comments, public feedback, and for me, they were the basic basic components that would help mitigate that any impact on the neighboring residential. And this is something that is throughout the zoning code. There is, you know, much attention placed to buffering or screening these type of uses, which are usually not considered compatible. I provide that feedback to the project team. And they came forward with an amended plan and then upon you know, receiving the staff memo and I guess more consideration, the project team decided to further modify their plan. And that's, this is not received the complete staff review. We received on Monday. I've looked it over. It is basically related to the grouping of buildings, the fencing and screening and, you know, in landscape, meaning landscaping plan. The the basic engineering is still there. In this case, they're proposing shorter retaining walls and less impervious surface, but they did not accompany their latest submittal with revised site plan from their engineer. So because it's in a few different documents and to me that I'm not clear exactly where the fencing is proposed. I'd like to turn it over to the project team to describe, you know, this latest submittal that, you know, was given to planning commissioners on Tuesday. So it is somewhat new to us, but I figure project team are the are the ones who can describe it best. So at this point, I'd like to bring you know, turn, turn the, sorry, turn the the microphone over to Dick Biagini and Jerry Anderson to describe their latest submittal.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jerry Anderson. I'm with Jam Architects. I do have Dick here with me for answering questions. Donovan, could you bring up that site plan?
Sure.
Or should we bring it up, Jerry?
Or I guess I've got it here too. I can bring it up as well, Donovan. I think I can anyway.
Whatever works for you.
And either Donovan or Jerry, which site plan?
I'm looking for the newest one. The one that we updated yesterday. That plan basically covers point by point each of the items that you brought up in the last, we kind of took your information to heart. No pun there, Donovan, no. All right, so in in conjunction with what you had requested us to do and what we had agreed to do, there's about five or six major points here that I think need to be set out so that you can understand what's happening. The first thing was we took the entire 35-foot setback along the northern property line and left all of the trees in the existing woods intact there. It's our intention to go in and clean out the dead fall, clean those up a little bit. Make sure that woods is a little more presentable than it is in its current status. We are also leaving the woods along the western edge. There's about 17 feet of woods down there that is in pretty good shape before there's a clearing. So on that western edge, we've got about 17 feet of woods, 18 feet of woods. Along the northern edge, we've got 35 feet of woods. Those are being left in place. The second item is that we reduced the total number of units in here by
Does anyone else see the map?
No, I do not see it at all.
I don't either. I don't see nothing.
It cannot see the screen? So it's not showing on the screen?
No, it is not.
No.
Donovan, you want to bring that up?
You have to give him.
Yeah, I
Donovan, are you just able to share the document? I think he meant the one that he shared on Monday. Is that correct, Dick?
No, the one on the newest.
Yeah, here it goes. There it is.
Thank you. We can see it now.
I can't see.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to try and close the one that I have on my screen here so I can see you guys and see what's on the screen there. Okay, there's cursor. I don't know. What the question? How do we get this out the screen? All right, let's fix it up. Now we should get yours back up. Okay. Looks like we're back into joining Zoom here since the screen comes on.
We can hear and see you. And we can see the document Donovan is sharing.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have any visuals up right now, but so basically the document that you have in front of you, you can see that hatched area along the west edge, the 17, 18 feet of existing natural woods being left there and the 35 feet of hatched area along the entire north boundary of the site. Those are all existing woods that will be left in place, will be cutting out the dead, cleaning those woods up a little bit. But basically, basically those woods will be left intact as a as a visual element for screening and also and I'll get into this in a second, but we've talked to many of the neighbors out there now and want to make sure that we've met their concerns as well. So I'll bring that up with you in a few moments. But as we did this, two things happened. First of all, we cut down the square footage of the buildings. The current square footage is about 12,000 square feet less than the original proposal that we had. Also, we have 83 fewer units. So we have taken out between 20 and 25% of the total units. The result of this also is that all the garage doors facing the north toward any of the condos have been removed in their entirety. Everything faces into the interior of the site and the circulation that is on the interior of the site. The other result of this is we've gained over 2,800 square feet of impervious area. So everything's resulted there, I think, in a positive. There are a couple of things that I would like to acknowledge. I think during the last meeting, we had indicated that there were 6.8 vehicles per day in terms of visitation. And Chair Langness, you hit it right on the head. It's actually 6.8 vehicles per hundred units. So that puts it right at 20 to 21 visits per day. So you you had pegged that right on the head. We went back and double checked that and we were errant in that discussion was per hundred units, not for the entire site. In conjunction with that, the architecture itself has not changed. The overall engineering has not changed. Everything is still draining to the same locations. The difference at this point is that we have lower retaining walls because we're, we're actually planting those retaining walls at the backs of the buildings so that they're contiguous with the back of the building on that north line, 35 feet from the property line. We're also thinking in terms of some of the people that we've talked to. They have indicated that they, because the design of buildings, the nature of the buildings being residential in style, they would rather look at the buildings. They're set back from their property lines, I believe, 17 feet. So they're, they'd rather look at the backs of our buildings as a screen wall rather than placing a screen fence on their property line. So they would be looking at buildings through the woods that are 52 feet away rather than looking at a seven-foot screen wall that's 17 feet away. We have a letter. I don't know if you received the letter or not. But we have a letter from Vicki and Keith Olson that indicated that. Was that something that was, you were able to distribute this evening?
We did receive their letter.
You did, okay. So we'd spent time with with them. We spent time with Vic and Michelle down in the end. Those people, and I'm not trying to speak for them. They can certainly speak for themselves, but if they're joining tonight. But this was basically something that came out of their wishes as homeowners there in terms of what we could do. So we tried to accommodate that in conjunction with our plans. Now, the other thing that we're looking at doing is the middle third of this entire northern property line is parking and anywhere from seven and a half foot to 11-foot-high retaining wall as is the west end. However, with the screen fencing along the west side, we would carry that up to and pass the corner of the buildings. And in in conjunction with that, we would close that back off to the building. So we're using basically the buildings and the fencing for security all the way around this thing. We are adding rows of trees, herbivores, to screen along the north property on the west, on the northwest corner, coming back 200 and some feet. The same is true in the northeast corner, coming back 200 feet. We're also running those same trees along the fence line of the west property line and then returning 200 feet back to the east to help screen the lots for the three homeowners on the west side. The character of the buildings have not changed. They're residential in style. Basically, relatively low profile. Again, the property along that northern property line where the townhomes above us starting on the east side, we have about three and a half feet of elevation difference there. It rises as you go west to about 11 feet, 10, 11 feet in the middle, and then drops back down in the wood, in the northwest corner to about six feet again. So there's quite a bit of grade variation there as well. Ponding has not changed. The drainage systems essentially are the same. We will be making a few changes to the drainage because we've eliminated that north drive. So we won't have the runoff coming from that. But we will be picking up some of the runoff that would exist in the existing woods. So the soils out there aren't that great. We don't want that water to become saturated, those soils become saturated. So we will be collecting water there as well to tie into our storm drainage system. We have added the lights that you requested to be shown on the office warehouse building that's reflected in the photometric plan that's in your packet. And we have again checked the turning radiuses. We've checked the the drive aisle widths. There's plenty of clearance for vehicles to park and pass. As you can see, based on the dimension elements of the plan and again, all of the lighting is interior. We don't have anything at all that reaches the property to the north or the west. Obviously, to the south, there is no existing development and we're over 80 feet from our buildings to the property line on the east. So there, there is nothing in terms of light levels of that would affect anyone all the way around this property. Let's see. I think I've touched all of the high points. Do any of the planning commission members have questions at this point?
Commissioners, are there questions of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Young?
I greatly appreciate the changes that you've made. I do greatly appreciate that you listen to us, that the conditional use permit does require us to minimize the, any adverse effects on the surrounding properties. And I really do appreciate the work that you've done on this.
Well, actually, you know, as we went back into it, Vicki, and kind of reworked things, many of the things that were brought up made some sense to us. Again, you know, we've had conversations with some of the homeowners since that meeting. And again, we're trying to accommodate what we need to make this a sustainable, viable development. But at the same time, we're trying to fold everything in so that it meets the needs and has some sensitivity as it relates to property owners.
Other questions from commissioners of staff or the applicant? Hey, Dan, do you want to go over how to bring up the public comment period? And we'll do that next before we bring it back to commissioners for conversation and consideration.
I'm sorry, was that directed to me? Sorry.
I said, I said, Dan. I guess I assumed he is the city of Forest Lake on the Zoom, but if it's, if it's you that can call people up.
Yeah, it's me.
My apologies. Donovan, can you go over the process on how people can raise their hand and if there's anyone at City Hall?
Okay, no one is currently here at City Hall. We do have some attendees and the, and if you would like to, any of the attendees, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you and bring you into, you know, as a speaker role for you to provide your, your public comment.
Has anyone raised their hand yet, Donovan?
Not that I can see, no.
Okay, we'll give it, we'll give it another minute here or 30 seconds or a minute. Are there still none?
I do not see any.
All right, I, I think we've satisfied the intent for the public comment period. We'll bring it back to commissioners. We are on item number six for the conditional use permit application.
I'm sorry, I do have a raised hand. Rocky, I will bring you in, you know, as a speaking participant.
All right, thank you. Rocky, you need to unmute yourself and then just go ahead, state your name and address for the record. And then we'll give you a few minutes here. We can hear you, Rocky.
Hi, this is Vic Stark. I'm at Rocky Shields Place. We've been watching the meeting. And I'm also, I'm here kind of on the behalf of Michelle Von Wald, who is not unable to attend. She's out of town. And actually out of, out of range for any kind of remote kind of thing. So she's on vacation. So I just wanted to say thank you, Jerry and Mr. Biagiani. It looks like you guys have, you know, gone beyond what I was actually expecting to see today. And I, I think I, I think I might be speaking for a few people on that. I had a whole bunch of questions about the plans that I was able to view in the agenda packet, but the new stuff that you just brought up on the screen actually seems to have answered all of my my questions. So I just wanted to say thanks for listening to the neighboring homeowners and their concerns and really feel like, you know, maybe at the beginning, there were some hiccups on just trying to communicate with everybody, but I feel like your team has done your due diligence, I guess, for lack of a better term, on satisfying some of these requirements or I should say requirements from the city, but requests from the community. And I think I will hand it over to Rocky if she has anything to add. And she said, she's waving no. She does not have anything to add. So I don't know if there's anybody else here that wanted to say anything, but I will yield the floor. Thanks again.
Vic, before we cut you off here, can you please state your name for the rec or your address for the record?
Yeah, my home address is 32 Northwest Fourth Avenue. I'm acting on behalf of Michelle Von Wald, who is at 222 91 Cameo Court. Her property is the, would butt up against the most north east corner of Mr. Biagiani's project. And just for the record, my first, my first name is actually Richard Legally. I go by Vic, which is spelled V I C. I've noticed it always comes up as V I C K, but I'm used to that. So again, does that answer your questions?
That's sufficient for the record. Is there anyone else in that room that wanted to speak?
Rocky shaking her head, no.
Oh, I can't tell if there's other people than her. So thank, thank you.
I don't, I think some of the neighbors are watching. I'm not sure. We don't have a big group here tonight.
Thank you. Donovan, is there anyone else that's raised their hand?
No, at this point, no.
Okay, we'll move off of public comment and move into a commissioner's consideration. We are on item number six, the conditional use permit application for 4470 220th Street. Is there a motion or comment? Commissioner Miller?
I do have a comment and I would just like to thank Mr. Biagiani and Mr. Anderson. I know you're sacrificing a lot of revenue, but you did listen to the things we talked about and and what the neighbors and the community had talked about. And I certainly appreciate you preserving those trees and and bringing this project back to us and hanging in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Young?
Donovan, you had a couple of concerns in a, in the version, in the version that was in our packet. Has the submission from Tuesday alleviated those concerns?
Not all of them. Thank you for asking. I'd like to share with you consideration that relates to the screening that's required for commercial uses when they're directly adjacent or across the street from residential districts. And I bring this up because even though the woods do provide certainly buffering, they're certainly welcome and they have been there's certainly welcome, and they have many other benefits besides that simple, you know, separation of the buildings from the neighboring properties. I don't believe in my, you know, from my reading of the code, that they provide an 80% opaque at the time of installation screening that is required. And this basically relates to, you know, what you have in a screen, lots of words, but essentially saying that there needs to be 80% opaque, no less than six foot in height screening between the, the commercial or industrial use and the adjacent residential. Now, if it is, Plan Commission's consensus, perhaps this could be brought as part of the PUD flexibility to not require this as part of this project. And that is really the only concern I have at this moment regarding this. And I, I haven't given it a full, a full, full review, but looking, looking over it, that's, that's my main comment.
Donovan, could you bring up the landscape plan that was part of that supplemental again yesterday? It might, it might help the commission members see what we were looking to do relative to
Here we go.
Okay, you can, you can see the rows of arbor bythes that were providing along that north line behind the buildings to the west and the east. Those are directly where the condo buildings exist or the townhome buildings exist. And then on that west side, we were looking at bringing that line up and continuing it over so that we close that corner up in its entirety. So basically, we're screening everything from the views of the windows, the balconies, the, the decks, with the exception of where the parking exists for the townhomes and the apartments that have been built to the north of us.
Commissioner Batty?
Well, I'm just curious here, Donovan, you know, you said that you haven't, you know, completed your review and I'm just curious how that's going to play out here, how you see this playing out here. I'm just trying to find a process here.
Certainly, certainly. Um, you know, after the May 27th meeting, the, you know, I did set a deadline for the applicants to resubmit and provide the guidance that related to the screening fencing and that northern setback. And, you know, they did submit plans for that. It's something of a courtesy that we're allowing this because it's after that deadline, you know, and the deadline's there so that we can do complete reviews and I can, you know, present a package to Plan Commission where there is a good amount of clarity. It's, you know, what, what is here is basically for, for the Plan Commission to consider. You know, I think the, the applicant, you know, the applicant team has really made some really great concessions in their project, reducing the number of units, providing the screening, and really mitigating those impacts on neighbors as we've, you know, heard from one neighbor and, you know, tonight, as, as well as that, that letter from Keith and Vicki Olson that you received earlier today. But, you know, that's, so it's really up to the Plan Commission if they feel comfortable with this amount of information to make a recommendation this evening.
Yeah, I'll up here, just, you know, with having, you know, okay, I understand where you're coming from, but on, if I look at that drawing that we, you know, that landscape plan drawing, it basically then that center, the center half of the site, I mean, we're, we're putting trees on, you know, about coming in about a quarter of the way on each side in the middle half of the site, looks to me like there isn't any screening proposed at all in that section. Is that, am I, am I interpreting that this correctly?
You know, that is correct.
Other than the back to the building, other than, I mean, the developer described the, that they were using the backs of the building to essentially.
Right.
Screen, but I don't know if that, is that, is that acceptable? I mean, in terms of the ordinance? I'm not trying to be difficult here because I, in general, I, you know, obviously they've made some huge concessions here, and in, in general, I like it. I did, that, that the screening thing was the only thing that I picked out that I just really couldn't tell what was being proposed.
Well, the, no, I think, I think you're, you're doing a pretty astute reading here. The, my recommendation is when there is greater than a seven foot grade change between this property and the northern property, then there needn't be any, any screening. Because this wall, at its highest point, is something like 11 feet tall. So any, any sort of screening, unless you're talking about, you know, mature pine trees, it's, it's not, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen for a while. So I don't see that's necessary. And essentially, you know, the elevation change provides something of a screening. There's actually two requirements here, they're kind of somewhat could be kind of conflated. For self-storage units, one of this conditional use permit requirements is that there either be fencing or buildings on the perimeter of the, of the property. And, you know, this is, this is achieved, you know, for the most part, I mean, we did, you know, recommend, I did recommend, you know, not needing this here in this area, the pond area, but essentially everywhere else, you either do have fencing or buildings providing kind of a protective perimeter.
Okay, so that does, so that does count then, I mean.
It does, it counts as the perimeter, protective perimeter, but not, but the screening requirement is different. It has those standards for, you know, 80% opaque at time of installation and no less than six feet in height.
So, but that's what I'm trying to get at here. Does, does the backs of the buildings, in this case, for a self-storage unit, does that count as screening?
No, they do not.
Okay.
The, because they represent the use and the screening is there.
There needs to be, okay, I, I understand the 11 foot thing, but it just, it seemed like there needs to be, there needs to be some more, you know, some things, because I, I, we don't, we don't know how thick the trees are, if they're mostly deciduous trees, then when the leaves are gone, it's basically gonna be, you're gonna be able to see through there. It just seems to me that there should be some additional requirement here for, and again, if, if there's, if there's natural screening, fine, but I, I just want to make sure that there is and that, that we, we're not, or we're not missing the requirement for screening here. Otherwise, I, you know, beyond that, I'm in favor of, of the project as it's shown here.
Commissioner Young, I saw your hand up next.
I'm gonna delay for a moment, and let's get a couple of, of, of these questions answered.
Did the applicant have a comment?
First of all, because we're involved in a PUD, the PUD gives you flexibility in terms of area standards and use standards. And I'm gonna make two comments. Number one is the homeowners would rather look at the backs of the buildings, that'd be the screening, than fencing. That's number one. Number two is behind our buildings, where those existing living units are, we are providing arbor bythes on close enough centers so that those buildings will be screened in their entirety at those two ends. You won't see the buildings. Even in the winter, when the leaves fall off the trees, the arbor bythes will retain their green leafy foliage and will be a part of that screening situation, where we have the gaps between the buildings, those three areas between the buildings. There we are going to provide screen fencing and the retaining walls with the screen fencing just behind those walls or on top of those walls. That will give us the security we need and provide the screening that would be missing in those gaps.
Thank you. Are there other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Young?
This, this is kind of a unique application because it has so many moving parts. I do agree that the, the fact that it's a PUD does offer some flexibility. I think that the applicant has gone very far to, to satisfy the residents and, and to not completely satisfy them, especially if you had believed that you would have a perpetual woods when you bought the house. But I think that there has been a good compromise. The first thing on our agenda is, is to deal with the conditional use permit. And I'm going to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit as the application as submitted Tuesday, yesterday, with the proviso that the city engineer and the fire chief make a final review of that Tuesday doc, of the Tuesday application, and that any comments that they have must be addressed.
There is, there's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. I'm gonna kick off the conversation first with Commissioner Young. I believe staff has 12 different points on their recommendations. It is on page 18 of our packet. Is your intent to include all of those in that motion or not?
Okay, I am trying to dodge between a bunch of documents here and the, the one staff concern that I would, and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't see it right now. Donovan, I'm assuming that one of your concerns was the screening in the 12?
In, in condition 12? I'm sorry.
In the 12 conditions. I'm sorry, I can't, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so number, number two relates to that, that screening, you know, related to screening. It says, "The project meets recommended screening fencing standards along the northern and western project boundaries that are outlined in the staff memo. Screen vegetation must be maintained through the duration of the self-storage facility use."
All right, and, and that is acceptable to me.
Yep.
So, so Eric, or pardon me, Chairman Langness, those, those conditions would be part of the motion because they include the review by the city engineer and the fire chief.
All right, I wanted to make sure, because some of them on the list were along the lines of like, no residential manager is allowed, the hours of limitation, sign permits must be pulled, a lot of the standard stuff.
Correct.
And that was your understanding too, Commissioner Miller, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, are there comments from commissioners?
If I, if I could interrupt, I'm Chair. So contain the memo is recommended screening and fencing standards that, you know, are, are different, you know, I wouldn't make those same standards based on what was submitted, you know, what you've reviewed since Tuesday.
And, and Chair Langness, my, because I, I intentionally referenced the PD, PUD portion of this because I believe that the flexibility that, that is allowed, and which I am usually not very fond of in a PUD application, that flexibility with the retention of the woods, with the arbor bythe, does meet the screening criteria. And so it, it, the motions sort of build on each other because this is such a unique application.
I would agree.
It certainly is. Comments from other commissioners? The, I'll, I'll go into my comments on it. For the, for the applicant, I am much, much, much more pleased with this application than the, the previous versions that came to us. The comments and feedback that I did hear from neighbors is that it is better. I think you addressed sufficiently all of the concerns commissioners brought forward. I am not concerned about the, the screening on, on the north side as you're presenting it in the, as we see it on the screen today. I think preservation of those woods, and I did walk the, the back of those woods and go in both adjacent neighborhoods there, I think that your screening, along with those buildings, will be sufficient. The, the one sticking point, and I don't want to get too far off because we're on item number six and not number eight, but they're all kind of tied in here. And I can go into, you know, my questions on, is the zoning proper in here for the camp, plan amendment later on? But that is probably the, the greatest concern I have about this at this point. I can discuss that later, but I am happy to, to support this portion of the plan at this point. Are there other comments from commissioners? Seeing none, Karen, can you take a roll call on the motion?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
And Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. We're on item number seven, the preliminary planned unit development application, 4470 220th Street, Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage. This is in conjunction with the last agenda item. Donovan, did you have anything to add on this specific note, or do you believe you covered it before?
Just the, you know, the flexibilities that are sought, or basically within, you know, all that this, you know, the COPs, and we've talked about, you know, things related to screening, fencing, the, the parking availability for, you know, public parking. And at this point, you know, staff does recommend approval of, recommendation of approval for the preliminary PUD.
And I believe that was with two different conditions you have listed on page 18 for those looking. I'm gonna ask the applicant next. Did you have anything to add to this specific agenda item?
No, we have, I think we've addressed everything that we set out to. Chair Langness, thank you. I don't have anything to add at this point.
That's fine. Stick around, we might have questions. Commissioner Young, I saw you had your hand up.
Um, I want to make sure that the rest of the commissioners are, are okay. Eventually, I, I will be making a motion to approve the preliminary PUD with the conditions.
I'm okay.
I'm okay. I would even second that.
Commissioner Keen, were you raising your hand?
I was just agreeing. I agree with her.
You certainly can make a motion at this point, Commissioner Young, if that was your intent.
Then Chair Langness, I move that we, second, that we approve the preliminary planned unit development application as submitted Tuesday with the conditions recommended by staff.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I would second that.
And discussion on the motion? Not seeing any hands raised. I just want to clarify that this is a recommendation of city council approval, so we don't make the final decision on this one. But I am certainly in support of this as well. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Karen, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. I. Motion carries. We're on item number eight.
Eric, we lost you.
I think I might have just cut out. Donovan, did you have anything to add to this specific agenda item?
No, just, just, I guess I want to clear, just provide clarity on. That, again, this is a recommendation to council. And it's, if it's, it goes to council, council then has the opportunity to authorize it's, it's a middle to the Met Council. And that, you know, is, is a. You know, is a, not a real lengthy, but there is a sometime for a review process before that comes back. But the ultimate decision for comprehensive plan amendments is with the Met Council staff in this case.
Did the applicant have anything for this specific agenda item?
The only thing I would like to mention is, you know, we've talked to a lot of the neighbors, we've talked to a lot of the surrounding property owners. I have yet to talk to one single individual that would prefer an apartment building to what we're proposing here. That's the only thing I really have to say.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the, the commission for a motion or further discussion.
Something to say? Do you hear me?
Yep, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just want to thank. For the effort. And also want to thank Donovan Hart. And I really did think the neighbors had a lot of input. So I appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Was, was that all from the applicant?
Yes, it was.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, we'll bring it back for consideration or emotion. Commissioner Young?
What the heck? Let's go for the clean sweep. I am going to move that we recommend to council the comprehensive plan amendment for 4470, 220th Street.
Does that include the staff recommendation?
Yes, it does. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Batty, are you seconding that motion? We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Not seen anybody raise their hand. My, um, my comment on this is. You know, I think we very intensely changed this property in our 2040 comp plan to be residential. In, in my heart, I still think that that property actually is best suited as a residential property. That said, and I'm shocked, but like the applicant said, every single neighbor, and I spoke to a number of them. Would rather have a mini storage essentially in their backyard. Additional residential. Honestly, it surprises me. And it is quite frankly, the only reason. I'm willing to say, yep, fine, let's, let's allow it to change to commercial in this instance. So I'll support it, even though I personally don't think it's the, the best use of that land. Is there other discussion on this item?
I would just echo that, Eric. I'm very surprised that the residents would prefer this to the apartment building. But I would prefer this to be residential, but again, this would be the reason I would be okay with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Brink. Is there other comments? Seeing none. Karen, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Young? Commissioner Keen? Commissioner Brink? Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Batty? Chair Langness?
I. Motion carries to the applicants. I wish you luck over at the city council. Hopefully they're a little bit easier on you. I know some of them have been watching our meetings and, and I welcome you to Forest Lake.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your input. We appreciate your due diligence in helping us through this.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number nine. Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application. Headwaters 123 property. PID 29.032.21.23.0002 and 29.032.21.24.11. I'm sorry, dot 0001. This. Does have a public hearing after we have a staff report. And then we can consider the application following. Donovan will discuss how to bring up those members of the public either in attendance or online that wish to speak in our public hearing at that point in time. Donovan, do you want to go through?
Like to share. Chair, members of Plan Commission, I'd like to present the Headwaters 123 zone. I'm sorry, Chair, is this is the, I didn't have my gin in front of me. Is this the zoning map amendment or comprehensive plan amendment initially?
You have, you have the comp plan amendment as item number nine, the zoning map amendment as item number 10.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to present the. The zoning map amendment for the Headwaters 123 property. This refers to city on parcel that is south of Edwards Parkway and west of Highway 61. Consists of two parcels. It's largely in agricultural use now with the wooded area to the south. It is 123 acres in size. This was originally part of, is still part of the Headwaters PUD. But the ownership reverted back to. The, the, the city during the great recession and the city's held it for this period of time. The future land use category for this, this parcel is. Is a. Is low to medium density residential use and. It. Does have. Section. That. You know, that is, I'm sorry, it's low medium density residential use down here in the southern portion. It's about 33 acres. And mixed use for the remainder. This mixed use, same future land use category, if you recall, is in the Headwaters Village where we've discussed. So it is a collection of. Of retail, residential and office uses. And the, the low medium density residential is for the single end, single end attached homes. And, you know, this portion of it. Was also fronting the golf course with the idea there'd be, you know, homes that could front the golf course. Similar to this other area here. And however, with changed city priorities on economic development. The city. Believes that the best use for this is business park as part of a tech corridor initiative. That we've discussed in previous meetings. And so the, the, the comp plan amend, the comp plan amendment is to change this to the entire 123 to business, business park. And which would leave some section here is mixed use and, and with other residential to the south and to the west. The. The act of the comprehensive plan amendment is largely a legislative act. And there aren't, there aren't criteria within the zoning code to. You know, review the, review for the Plan Commission to provide guidance. But. This is, it is situated to be something of a, a job center. Is what the, is what the intention is with the city with this change and. You know, and there's been considerable investment and study with this with the EDA and with site work for this property. With that, happy taking questions from Plan Commission.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on the staff report? Commissioner Young?
Donovan, could you just clarify, verify a couple of things for me? First, this has been extensively discussed by the EDA, correct?
Correct.
In addition, this has been, this property is rather unique in that it has two different sources of electricity, two different companies cover this area.
Correct. There, there's redundancy there, which is really attractive to a, a data center and other large electrical users.
Third, there is a very significant high-speed cable telecom interweb, whatever. Fiber that goes down 61 that would be accessible to this development.
Correct. And that's actually the same one that the city, city center uses.
Okay. And then, then finally, this property has been part of a multi-county, multi-city. Joint effort at, at marketing this as a, as a jobs and, and a high-tech facility, correct?
Correct.
I think that there was some misinformation by members of the community or, or folks locally. That did not believe that this was something that, that had been extensively discussed by the council, by the EDA, by the county and, and in a multi-jurisdiction effort. Okay. Thank you, Chair Langness.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Batty, I believe you had your hand up next.
I just want to know, I, I, I want to, there's several things I want to discuss, but I just want to know how the discussion was going to be handled here. I mean, is this, this our time to discuss things? Or is there going to be a public, and then, then there's going to be a public hearing that, that is it going to come back to us? Or how, how, how do you plan to, to handle this?
My apologies if I didn't state that as clearly this time. So we will go, so we had the staff report. We are asking questions of the staff report now. I'll then pull up the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. We'll then consider the application and that's when we can make a motion and really should be discussing the application. And then we'll move into the zoning map amendment, essentially repeating all three steps again. Does that help?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll bring up a couple of things now. You know, I'm, I, I think all of you know me well enough to know that I'm pro-development here in, in the city and I, I want to, I want to see the city. Continue to blossom and grow and that sort of thing, but. And, and I'll admit to not having been part of all of these apparently fairly extensive discussions about this, but. From kind of looking in from the outside here, I, I have issues with the city and. In their, their seeming inability to market themselves and say, you know, we're open for business and stuff like that. But that's another whole thing and we're not going to go there tonight. But I'm going to, I'm going to go out on a limb here and I, I'm still very much pro-development and I'm fairly certain this is a, a battle I'm not going to win. But. And I'm a positive person. But I, I think rezoning, you know, and doing whatever, all, all of what we're going to do to this. Is, is putting all of our eggs in one basket. And I, I'm, I've been asking myself the question, you know, is this, is this the best way for us? As a city to, you know, to promote development? And. You know, keep things going, you know, and it, from one standpoint, this has the feel of buying a lottery ticket. I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying it, it, that's what it seems like to me. You're kind of putting all your eggs in one basket. And I, I'm just wondering if, if in the long run here, if we wouldn't be better off giving our, instead of saying, okay, this property is going to be zoned like this for this particular, this singular use. Two things. One is I'm not sure that that's in our best interest as a city. Because I, I just think us getting. A supersized, you know, high-tech business in this particular location is a long shot. I, I'm just, I, I just believe that it is. There are, I, there are. Just if we just consider the North Metro. Just mentioned one highway, 610. There are easily a half a dozen sites, you know, very probably similar in size. Much closer into the metro than this. And I'm sure that there are many of them down this corridor of, of. You know, Forest Lake, Hugo, White Bear Lake and whoever else is, is involved in that. And I don't, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, you know, come out as sounding like I'm against the initiative because I, I think it's fine, but I think it's a, I honestly think it's a long shot. And I think if somebody came along who was genuinely interested in this piece of property in this location. Wouldn't be put off by the fact that this property is currently zoned primarily mixed use. I guess the only thing that I can say on the other side of the coin is that, you know, if, if it doesn't happen, if, if. If, if the, if we don't win the lottery and get the, you know, get the development here, we can always change the zoning back. I know that's probably terribly failistic thing to say, but I, I just, I, I don't, I, for some reason, I just don't feel comfortable saying. You know, just, let's just call it this. I, I don't think in all honesties to anybody who is smart enough to be looking for the right piece of property with all of the surrounding amenities and things that are going to go along with us and make the decision. Are going to be put off by. Mixed-use zoning. I, I just don't think that's the case.
Did you have a question there, Commissioner Batty, for staff? We're on the staff report portion.
Well, I, I'm just curious how the decision. Who, who, who's pushing for business park? I mean, is it, is it, have we researched that from the standpoint of talking to commercial real estate agents? And I mean, is there, is there a ground swell of, of. Information, you know, that would say, yep, you need to be doing this and that'll make this that much more attractive?
Yeah, if I could, if I could address that. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Young, did you, did you want to speak first?
Be my guest.
I understand your skepticism, Dennis, and I would be equally skeptical, except. There was a, a winter day, I believe it was 2017, and I stood out, you know, on Chris Taylor's land, you know, south of, basically. In that Headwaters Parkway area. And, you know, this procession of about half dozen black Escalades came forward. It was, we knew they were coming and they were representatives of a western, west coast tech company, which we found out later was Google. And they seriously considered this site among many of the Twin Cities. Eventually they chose Becker. But, you know, for all the reasons, some of the reasons that Susan mentioned, Commissioner Young mentioned. The redundancy of electricity, proximity of, of water and sewer, these data centers in, in particular are big users, it's currently big use of water. And the proximity to housing, to the, the greater metro, size of the property. It really met a lot, a lot of the lists. And the one, one piece that is missing to make it more attractive to the site selectors is, is the zoning piece. And it's enough where, you know, it's not like we're in the lottery. I mean, we're in the lottery if we can meet all these criteria. And the zoning doesn't require a change, which includes, includes these public hearings and. Includes a level of uncertainty where they could easily go on to the, like other places you mentioned. Within, you know, within the Twin Cities metro. the Twin Cities metro. Also, I'll remind you that the, the business park is not dedicated to data centers, I mean, that's something we focused, and that's, we're working with, with a broker who is familiar with the market, and, and I wish he was here to explain more of, you know, the details of what you'd like to hear regarding how this, how this, what are the advantage of this property for this type of use, but also within the business park, future land use, are, it's guided for offices, wholesale showrooms, light manufacturing, research, and development, and training. So it's not simply a single use that we're trying to attract. But in my view, it's a, we're looking to create another 2040 job center that is not probably going to happen in the southwest corner of this, of this city, where we had once imagined, or hoped for a 35E interchange, to provide that quick access. So this is, I view this as something as a Plan B, because the areas around Broadway and 35, and 35 are just, they're constrained by wetlands, or they're fully developed, with only maybe, you know, some gray field, some parking lots for redevelopment, so this represents a, another job center, and also, I received, you know, one comment from a resident who, who was concerned about it being something like a second downtown or competing with downtown, and I want to assure you that these type of land uses aren't the ones that are the activity centers that drive people to this area that would compete with what downtown has and its unique amenities.
Commissioner Young.
Commissioner Batty, the Washington County Economic Development Authority and the City of Forest Lake did commission a study for the appropriateness of this, and I know I've seen it, I can't get it to you right now, but I know that before they, they put any more effort into this, that, that joint Washington County Economic Development and Forest Lake Economic Development Authority did, did commission a study to the viability of this. Quite frankly, I think that this is a much better use zoning-wise for this particular property than the last-minute changes to our 2040 plan that stuck a bunch of highway commercial down on the southern edge of the city, along Highway 61. I think that you're right, if this doesn't work in a few years, and we've got a phenomenal high-dollar proposal to buy the city's land, that makes really good sense for the city, and realize that this is an asset that the city has that needs to be maximized with both immediate revenue and long-range revenue for the city, we own this property, and we hold it in trust for our residents. The final thing is, I am so frustrated that Forest Lake has really not done the best job of marketing itself as the most significant northern suburb between here and Duluth, Duluth being a port, Duluth being a university area. We are the perfect midpoint for a large number of activities, and I agree with you, Commissioner Batty, that we haven't done a really good job of marketing ourselves that way. And, and I just think that there has been a significant amount of thought and consideration given to this and to kind of the, the unique attributes of this property.
Donovan, did you have a response to a question there or something?
Yeah, certainly, if I could add a little more. The city has held the land since perhaps it's '08, and it's been, it was, you know, in the 2030 plan, it was zoned, you know, low, medium-density residential. The city, you know, really held off on marketing it for anything because it didn't want to be in competition with, with other land users, other land, I'm sorry, owners who were seeking to redevelop their property. You know, if, if, you know, residential developer came in, paid the right price, you know, the city would of course want to maximize that benefit for the, for residents. But it was only, this, this is seen as a way to really not be in direct competition with other, other types of development. There, I, there are very few other parcels that are uniquely situated with these type of attributes, so it's meant to, you know, not interfere with that private market and private redevelopment efforts.
Thank you Donovan, were there other questions from commissioners on the staff report before we open up the public hearing? Not seeing any, we'll move into the public hearing Donovan. Do you want to explain to anyone, and let me know if there's someone that's shown up at City Hall and who's got their hand raised at the moment?
There is no one presently at City Hall, and I am waiting for someone to raise their hand of the attendees. There's one hand, Mr. Jensen, can you provide your, your public comment?
All right, Jamie Jensen, I can see her on, you may need to unmute yourself, I can see her on mute, and then please state your name and address for the record to start off. It appears you're still on mute, Jamie, you may need to, we can hear you now.
All right, wonderful, thank you. I'm interested in the property for residential.
Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Please, please state your name and address for the record.
Jamie Jensen, I'm at 1499 Clermarole Avenue in Roseville, Minnesota.
Thank you, go ahead.
Sure enough, I'm interested in the property, and I think most of you know that for residential purposes, I'm purchasing some property on the north side of the golf course, and would have liked to join it with the southern part of the 123 acres. I now understand that in April, you, you have your new comp plan in, and it allowed for 33 of those acres to be a low-density residential, and so I would be interested in purchasing those 33 acres presently, and developing it into single-family homes. We would probably start with homes along the golf course, and then proceed into the northern part of that 33 acres, that would be leaving 90 acres for the business area if you so chose. I guess, I'm trying to get a feel for what the city is looking for in this area. You've got it zoned, you know, for residential and comp plan for residential, and it's against a golf course, and so it looked to me like you wanted residential, and now you're talking about business, and if that's what you want, that's fine too, but it just looked like you were looking for residential. So I guess I would ask if it's okay, can I buy the 33 acres, and would you turn the other 90, you know, as you choose with that? I agree with Commissioner Batty that if there's no other use for it right now, why change it? Why not wait for somebody to come along who wants it, so that you can change it to their needs? So I guess along with that, that if you're going to change all 123 acres, I'm looking at putting in 18 lots without purchasing any of the 123, 18 lots on the north side of the golf course, I guess I would like to know if you're in favor of that then, or would you oppose that also? I guess I'm just trying to get an understanding of what you guys want, so that I don't waste your time, and I don't, you know, spin wheels for a long time, so. That's, that's, if you have any other questions, otherwise I'd ask that you leave the 33 and let me purchase it, or I guess let me know what you want to do. I can see Susan Young's hand, I don't know if I'm supposed to be doing anything or not.
I'm sorry, I was on mute for a second there. What I said is that typically we do not respond during public hearings unless there's a specific technical question of staff about their report, but I will, I will recognize Commissioner Young if she had something at the moment.
Mr. Jensen, I greatly respect your, your dedication to your vision for the property. The planning commission cannot accept a formal offer. If you have made a formal offer, purchase offer with specific dollars to the city council, that is the appropriate way for you to purchase any property, and I am certain that you have time to have that in front of them, a solid purchase offer before they consider our recommendation tonight.
Yes, and I did make two purchase offers, all cash for the asking price. I don't know if you can hear me or not, I can't tell.
We can, we can hear you Jamie, did you have additional comments for the public hearing?
No.
All right, thank you Donovan, do we have anyone else that's raised their hand or walked into City Hall anxious to speak first or next?
I do not see other hands raised, there was a young family who came earlier, and I said, come back, you know, after the first agenda item, and they, you know, and they have actually timed it pretty well, that would take about an hour, and did, and they haven't not come back, unfortunately, so the night must be pretty nice out there.
And the door's not locked out there, right?
No.
Okay.
I unlocked it.
We can't wait for them if they're not here, so. No one else raises their hand, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to commissioners, we are on item number nine, the comprehensive plan amendment application for the Headwaters 123 property, I'm not going to go through and read the PID numbers I did before, so we can make a motion or have further comments at this point, Commissioner Miller?
Just a couple of discussion items, Donovan. Why, why would we need to keep all 123 acres? What would be the impact if we sold part of this to Mr. Jensen, or left that zoning as, as it is currently as residential, and only offered 100 acres or, or 95 acres for this business park? What, what's the, why is the 123 such a magical number?
I don't think there's a magic with that, I think it's letting, you know, letting any, a site selector decide, you know, what, what, what large portion they might want, just to keep all options open, larger options open. And, I mean, I could expect at some point there not be, you know, one or more users who would use up 123 acres, you know, I could imagine maybe it's a couple, you know, again, just very, very, you know, sheer speculation, but perhaps it's, you know, 40 acres or 50 acres, you know, two years, users maybe. And the, you know, but I think at that point, then the city could say, all right, we've established the commercial use, it's buffered on all sides with, you know, the existing residential to the north with the, you know, across the Headwaters Parkway, and to the west, and then, and to the south to, all right, now it's time, we could do that. I think there is some anxiousness that once residential use was established on that south side, that it could really impact the public process on, or just, you know, it would be, you know, it would really, it could make it much tougher in, during public hearings to gain approval. Also, I'll, I will clarify that Mr. Jensen did offer twice to buy a portion of about 17 acres of this, the southern section of this Headwaters 123 property, and the city refused the offer twice.
Commissioner Miller, go, continue.
So, so as stewards of the city, you know, in a way, you know, we have, you know, so obviously we have someone that's willing to purchase some property, that's willing to build some houses, to create some revenue for our city, and, and in the process of all of that, as we, if we wanted to change the zoning, that could be all part of the plat, and it could be part of the recording, so anybody that would go in to purchase these residential homes on this golf course are going to be aware that now this is budding up to a business zoning area, I guess I don't see the issue with that, and so for me, it's really hard to, to say, let's just keep, like Dennis said, Mr. Batty said, let's just, let's just keep this 123 acres in our pocket for, you know, potentially some, some, some pipe dream that, that may or may not come, when we have a ready, willing, and able buyer that's willing to buy the property, develop the property, put some housing in the property to create revenue for us, and we still could keep 100 acres or 95 acres, or whatever the number is, for business. So I'm, I have a hard time with this, to, to change this all to just, to, to, to this, to this new zoning, so I'm just voicing my opinion.
Certainly, well, I would have to, I have to, Commissioner Miller, with all due respect, I have to counter that, you know, Mr. Jensen has submitted two purchase offers, both were denied, and he didn't come back with another offer to, that was, that was offered for the city to consider, and, but they were the same offer twice, so I, I would question the characterization that he's a willing buyer because he's not shown the commitment to gain control of the land.
Commissioner Young.
I am. I, I believe that, that the city council and the EDA really need to, to weigh in on this with us. I'm going to make a motion to table this, these two agenda items, and I am going to table them until such time, I believe that we have a joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission set up relatively soon Donovan?
It's not been officially scheduled, but I think we'll get one.
All right, I am going to make a motion that we table this action until after a joint meeting of the EDA, the city council, and the planning commission, so that the planning commission can better understand the reasoning and thought of the city council with respect to this property.
Commissioner Young, I want to clarify here, are we, is your motion to table the agenda item we're on at this point only, is that correct?
It is my, it is my intent to table both items, because they are tied together, but I believe that you are correct, and I can only table the item that we are currently discussing.
That was my hopes, because I didn't want to call you out of order, so you have made a motion to table item number nine that we are on the comprehensive plan amendment, is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Keen, are you seconding the motion?
I'm seconding the motion, but I would also like, could we?
Commissioner?
Okay, go ahead.
A motion to table, thank you, a motion to table is non-debatable, and I, so if we want to debate this, then.
Not going to debate it, I was wondering if it should be brought up in that meeting with everybody to discuss this topic, because she tabled it for after the meeting.
We're getting into debate here, so if we want to talk about it further, then we should vote no on this motion if we want to table this. Commissioner Young, can you clarify one other piece, so that the table for clarity is to the point in time following a joint meeting with council and EDA, or is it at a meeting with council and EDA?
It has to be following because we cannot connect, conduct business at a planning commission at a joint meeting of two other entities of the city. And so my motion to table is for a planning commission duly constituted meeting after a joint meeting of the city council, the EDA, and the planning commission.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we have the motion clear. Um, Karen, you have that motion understood? We'll move to a roll call if you could for us, please.
Commissioner Young.
Hi.
Commissioner Keen.
No.
Commissioner Brink.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Batty.
Hi.
Chair Langness.
No, motion carries. We are on item number 10. We will have the staff report. If there's anything you had additional, Donovan. We then jump into the public hearing and then we can discuss or consider any motions. Donovan, did you want to go through anything additional here, or has your recommendation changed after the last motion? Donovan, you're on mute.
Thank you. Um, chair members of planning commission, um, I, my motion has not changed. I just do want to clarify that this is a, the application is a zoning map amendment to change this city-owned, um, Headwaters 123 parcel from, you know, low-density residential, um, you know, MXR1 to the, uh, um, business park, um, and also, um, not extend that as Headwaters PUD. Um, and the staff memo, uh, staff recommendation is to, um, recommend council approval of this zoning, zoning map amendment.
All right, thank you. Um, are there questions from commissioners on the staff report? We're on item number 10, the zoning map amendment application. Commissioner Betty?
I just want to make sure I understood what Donovan just said. So it would be taken out, this would no longer be part of the PUD, the Headwaters PUD, is that, did I hear that?
Correct. That's, that's the recommendation. Um, and my rationale with that is it's Headwaters, it's, it's basically it's a residential, you know, PUD.
Okay.
In, and the standards would, don't really apply in, in this sort of commercial use.
So what, is it the B2, uh, zoning that it would be changed to, or what, what is there?
BP, yeah, BP.
The separate. I was just looking at the zoning map here. It must be that there's no B, oh, there it is. Okay, I see.
You want?
No, I got it.
You got it, okay.
Questions from other commissioners? Seeing none, we can move into the public hearing. Um, Donovan, has, uh, anyone walked into City Hall? Raise their hand and can you, let me know who is available first?
Sure, um, we have Mr. Jensen, I would like to speak.
All right. We can bring him up.
Okay.
Jamie, I can see you on the screen. Um, you'll need to click in the lower left corner to unmute yourself again. I see you're unmuted. Please, again, I know it's repetitive, but please again, for the record, state your name and address for the record to start.
Sure, uh, Jamie Jensen, 1499 Clarimar Avenue West in Roseville. And I really don't have anything to add. I'm just indicating that I'm here and I'm still interested in this item.
You're on mute, Derek. Thank, thank you. Um, my, my button's separate than the screen. Donovan, is there anyone else that's walked into City Hall or has raised their hand? If there's anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing, please raise your hand or comment in the comment section that you'd like to speak and we'll bring you up.
No one else is raising her hand at this moment.
All right, let's give it another 30 seconds or so because we moved pretty quick through this one. Doesn't actually look like there's a whole lot of participants in this meeting. Um, still no hands raised, Donovan?
Correct.
We'll close the public hearing then and we'll bring it back to the commission for consideration in or emotion. Commissioners? Not seeing hands go up. I'll, I'll comment on this property. It is really hard to separate these two items. Um, and I don't want to go into the last one. The, um, the city council has, um, considered Mr. Jensen's, property and, and, and we, we actually considered it quite some time ago, um, commissioners, and I, I want to say that it was unanimous or close to it from our part, um, that, uh, the, the concept idea was one that we supported, although we were very clear about, um, some infrastructure pieces. We were clear that there was some direction that needed to go to the park board. We were, um, clear that if a, a, a property sale that, um, was included in it would need approval from the city council. And quite frankly, um, the city council has had extensive discussion, um, on this property. They did entertain, um, the purchase offer. If I recall correctly, it was unanimously shot down. And when I look at some of the things from this developer, um, and particularly, uh, quite a bit of communication, um, that the developer has had with me, I seriously question the competency of this developer. Um, and I'll, I'll point to something that came to all of us, uh, this week, the, the letter dated April, the letter dated, I think it was Monday this week, where he noted that we have, this project that he's proposing for about 60 homes, creating 1,800 jobs. I can tell you right now, 60 homes being built does not come close to creating 1,800 jobs. It's probably a stretch to even say 180 jobs. And I would guess it's significantly less than that. Quite a number of the so-called facts Mr. Jensen likes to put out there, I am often finding are exaggerated or quite frankly, just untrue. In quite a bit of commentary that he's had with me, um, throughout this process, but particularly in the last, mm, three to six months, he's combative, extremely difficult to work with. He is, um, disparaging of, of our staff. And quite frankly, just keeps repeating himself over and over. And doesn't present actually anything different than his initial proposal that he had a year and a half or two years ago, or whenever it was we initially looked at it. So I have a hard time taking that seriously at all. The property for the 123 acres, um, as a contiguous unit, is been presented to the EDA, I believe by the EDA specialist from the county, as being more marketable, and I believe it was in the study as well, that I think about $30,000 and Donovan might be able to correct me on that. I think, I think between the counties and the city, funding a study to very deeply look at the ability of this property to go to market, was that it was better as a contiguous unit rather than parsing it off, and particularly parsing off just a portion as Mr. Jensen has presented. And that has been rejected by council already. So I have a hard time saying that we should shrink it without, um, really good insight on that. And i- if, if that takes, um, a stronger connection between the EDA and council and I, um, I'm happy to support that and have, um, this entire planning commission understand, um, the depth of all that I've watched in many of those meetings, and I don't know if you do that or not. But I, I am actually quite ready to support these motions. After knowing all of that information, and I hope that you're able to get to that point too. Commissioner Young, I think you had your hand up next.
Yes, the, no surprise, uh, I am making a motion to table this item until the, uh, planning commission subsequent to a joint meeting of the EDA, the planning commission, and the city council to, uh, include a discussion of this property and their, their vision and plans for it.
Commissioner, uh, that Commissioner Young has made a motion. Commissioner Miller, are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A table motion is non-debatable. Karen, is the motion understood by you? All right, I see her head, head, I see your head nodding. Thank you. If, if you could please take a roll call vote.
That. Commissioner Young.
Hi.
Commissioner Keen.
Hi.
Commissioner Brink.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Batty.
Hi.
Chair Langness.
Hi, motion carries. We are on to item number 11, other business. Um, we usually bring up our, um, council liaison. I don't see him on here. Did we invite him today, Donovan?
He is out of town. Um, he was not at the council meeting on Monday night, so do not take it personally.
There, there is internet out of town. He may have wanted to come on anyhow. Well, we'll move into, to you if you have anything else additional.
Yeah, I will report that the, um, council, um, did have a, a couple of planning commission-related agenda items on Monday night. One of them was the, uh, the, the Headwaters, uh, Village PUD Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment, um, where Common Bond was the applicant. And they voted, uh, they made it, they voted to approve that zoning map amendment to change the property, to, um, mixed use two and, um, and also approved the PUD amendment request for greater height and residential density for that, for that, that property that outlot A and Headwaters Village. And also did affirm, um, and did not vote approval for the monument sign, um, the PUD amendment that was sought by the owner, Mr. Mr. Pratt. Um, in other matters, they also did extend the Headwaters 123 plat, um, to provide more time for the, the developer to find a buyer for the site and, and then complete that, install the public infrastructure, create the lots, and get that plat recorded. So that was that. And also I will report that we do have an agenda for July 8th, for that planning commission meeting. And I will get back to you on the, um, the joint meeting, that is tentatively scheduled for July 20th. And I think that, um, if possible, we would have that joint EDA, city council, and planning commission meeting, perhaps prior to the, the other agenda item that we're initially convening that joint meeting for.
That sounds like good scheduling. Are there, is there any questions of Donovan from commissioners? Karen, do you have any, um, additional notes for us?
I do not. I was going to mention that the joint meeting was on the 20th of July as a workshop. That's the, um, regular workshop day for council, so.
And that meeting will be held by Zoom, I'm suspecting.
We, the, it's the intention to hold it in the community room at the city center.
Gotcha. And that includes the public?
That would, it's a, they would include the public.
All right, thank you.
It's a, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, I, that, it might be, we might have to make the public part of it remote. Maybe the, um, public is in council chambers. You know, it's social, to, to remain, to retain social distancing.
Seems reasonable. Um, commissioners, any questions for Karen? Otherwise, we can go around the room. I'll just pick you in the order. You're on my screen. Commissioner Batty, do you have anything additional?
Um, is, I've been concerned about this whole thing of joint meetings and that sort of thing. Is there, Donovan, is there any policy, or is that just something that's done at the back and call of the, of the council? I mean, is there any formal way for us to, to request a joint meeting? I mean, essentially, that's what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah, um, yeah, excuse me, maybe you know more about the protocol of that one, but it seems to me that's a, a respect given to either body, um, if the request is made.
And it, historically, there is not a, there's nothing in the city's, um, laws or regulations, um, but it, it is something where if the, if a body, the EDA, the, um, the, the planning commission, the, the park board, um, wishes a more formal conversation, with the city council or another body, uh, again, we could, the planning commission could request a joint meeting with the, with the park board to clarify certain matters. Um, because the, the joint meetings occur because we cannot poll individuals on the city council about a particular item. In other words, I couldn't go to, um, a couple or of council members and the mayor and say, so what do you think about, um, making a four lane out of Highway 61? Uh, and then come to the planning commission and say, well, I, I think I've got pretty good support from the city council to make a four lane out of Highway 61. Those are called serial meetings and they are, they're not allowed according to the open meeting law. And so the best way, um, to be transparent and to be, um, deliberate and to, to get coordination between the various portions of a city is to request those joint meetings. I'm sorry, that was kind of a long explanation.
Commissioner Batty, did you have anything additional?
I, I'm not going to go into anything lengthy here, but, um, I, I get, I get questioned probably as much about city streets and repair and stuff like that, you know, and we have no, we have no interface at all with the, with the city engineer anymore. I mean, he used to regularly attend our meetings. Now, I mean, that's been months and months since we've seen him. And I, I'm not, that's not a personal attack or anything like that, but I, there doesn't seem to be any protocol at all for, uh, forum for addressing issues like that, that, that might come up. Or, or is that just not the, you know, is that just not part of, should I just tell people that that's not part of the purvey of, of planning commission members, you know, to, to discuss or even bring up issues like that?
I, I can maybe, I can maybe answer that for you a little bit, Commissioner Batty. Our, our city engineer has point blank told me that if we ever want him at a meeting, we just have to ask him and he'll happily join us. But of course, he's a rather busy engineer and, um, quite frankly, I think he's a really good one too.
I do.
And most of his reports and stuff that come to us are so detailed, I, I've, um, I think I asked him once to come to one of our meetings. But if you, if you ever want him to come and, uh, you know, shoot me an email, I'll happily ask him to join us or ask him to send one of his staff.
Let me throw a rhetorical.
More broad updates, if, if we want more broad updates, um, in regards to things that aren't on our agenda. You know, maybe ask, uh, Donovan or, or Karen to see if an upcoming meeting we can schedule him, specifically for whatever topic that is, um, so he can come a little more prepared. Donovan, did you do something additional?
Yes, please. Um, also I'd like to just do a little expectation management. I mean, Ryan is, his purview are projects, you know, currently, you know, they're doing, you know, initial initial design on the Everton Avenue reconstruction, you know. So I think it'd be if there was some, you know, a planning commission concern regarding that. But if it was your residents coming to streets and it's about maintenance, you know, they should go to open forum or they should, you know, reach out to a council member for someone who's or or call Public Works. You know, those, that's probably a better way for to receive that sort of information. But
That's what I, I mean, that's what I do, but I I just was, you know, it I've been on the planning commission long enough that I've seen, you know, and this is no reflection on you, Eric or or Donovan or or anybody else for that matter. But I I've seen a shift in in kind of how we do business and how things, you know, and the ability to dress, address issues that come up that you know, I think we've pretty much become exclusively a body that reacts to submittals, to what things that are submitted to us. And, you know, other than the comp plan of process, there really isn't any planning that we have input on other than specific issues that come to us. Is that, maybe that's kind of harsh, but that's kind of what I'm seeing.
I I think that's a fair criticism, Commissioner Batty. And if there's ever a topic you wish to be added to our agenda, you know, I would, I would ask that you email, email Donovan or or Karen and ask for it to be put on the agenda. I am happy to approve whatever agenda item any one of our commissioners wants to put on.
All right, that's
Commissioner Young, did you want to go next?
I'm just just responding to that. Quite frankly, if when we all took the training to be planning commission members, that's pretty carefully laid out that our our planning sorts of perspective is really the comp plan. And then the next level on the triangle, that the planning triangle, where we will have huge responsibilities is we are dealing with the zoning, the zoning rules and regs and and that's enormous. All right, and and that will be enormous. And that is also a very much a planning perspective. But then that that third piece of the triangle that the pointy part really is the planning commission making sure that things that come before us or that are presented to the city comply with the comp plan and the zoning regs. And that's just kind of the way planning commissions are.
Yep. Okay.
Keep running around the circle here. Commissioner Keen, did you have anything for tonight?
So for that July 20th workshop, joint workshop, that's not a for sure yet, or weren't involved with that one? I can answer. I'm still waiting for confirmation from the council members that that date, that we would have the majority. I already have a response from one council member that they will be out of town that week. And I haven't heard from the other four yet, so. So once you get it updated, you'll get back to me or us. Absolutely. Yep, yep. As soon as I find out, I will let everybody know that it's a go. That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink?
I've got nothing.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brink. Commissioner Miller?
Nope, I'm good.
And the only thing I had was to maybe add to Commissioner Batty's comments about roads and stuff. And this is more of a a comment. I'm not sure if Karen or Donovan, whichever is most appropriate. And I think it would be Dan that could do this. I get lots of questions and I see lots of questions on social media about, usually it's more road projects or what is this road going to be a project? And, you know, I'm I'm pretty creative in in finding those resources online and pointing people to them, whether it's Mindat or the county or, you know, I I can find it in a local packet. But it might be helpful if the city had on somewhere on their website, a very simple page of here's the 2020 road projects that are in town that could have been like by the the schools on 97, North Shore and 97. And even if it was just a link to the Mindat pieces there, the the county road Everton, which I believe is an open house stage this week. And I'd encourage anyone to take a look at that. I think Karen sent out a link on that. But then maybe a list of here's all the future projects. And I know one that came up today or or not today, I think it was on the weekend because there was a serious car accident in front of, or very close to Walmart on 12th there. And I know that's in the long-term plans to get fixed, but it would be nice to just have that on the list saying, here's when it's scheduled. And maybe a short summary or links to any graphs. That would be incredibly helpful, I think, for residents. Commissioner Young?
As part of
Commissioner Young, go ahead.
Yep, as part of every year's budget document, there is a 20-year capital improvement plan. And both all road projects, all mill and overlays, yada, 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 and all capital purchases are in that 20-year capital improvement plan, which is part of the budget.
Yeah, and and I I know that's a really good point and I was actually looking for it to find the 12th Street. Why didn't I couldn't find it in there even after about 30 minutes of searching? If I can't find it, it's probably a little more difficult for a resident, I'm sure. But even even that plan doesn't always list all the major projects like the interstate project or some of the 97 things or or a county project that doesn't have city involvement as much. And it's an excellent document to research. And I I'd still suggest maybe just putting up a one-page thing on on our website that's really easy to navigate.
And Chairman Langness, I I work for a city south of here and we run into the same problem that all of a sudden Mindat is closing a road in our city and we didn't know what was happening. So so coordination between state, county and 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 city jurisdictions on road projects, I completely agree. The communication could be handled better.
That city's a lot bigger than ours. So is there anything else from commissioners? Otherwise, we can move to the the 12th item adjournment on the list.
Talk with Ryan and see if he can get me a list. He he usually is up on all that. And I can certainly get a, see if he can put together a list for me that I can post on the front page of the website that would have, you know, road projects. Something, something.
Yep, thank you so much. Commissioner Keen, I see your hand raised.
One more thing, is there an update, Donovan, on the 97 project there over by the high school and junior high? Any update on that? Like what's going on?
I, as far as like future closures or traffic redevelopment, I don't have the latest on that. And that, you know, that that is a Min dot project.
So I realize that, but I mean, do they, did they give us a deadline?
I I don't know. I mean, I'm sure there is an expected, you know, project completion date. I don't have that in front of me.
Since the coronavirus thing, COVID-19, and it's like, we're kind of like left, kind of left out of the loop. Where normally we kind of hear about what's going on with these projects and.
I know that if, I know we were able to start earlier because of school wasn't in session, you know, at the at the campuses. That was, that was an advantage.
If I remember right, Commissioner Keen, I believe it has a late fall 2020 completion date for the bulk of the the work. Commissioner Young?
Okay, I just found there is a Min dot project page. If you Google Min dot, darn it, I just lost that baby. There it is. If you Google Min dot, it's that there's a place that says Minnesota State Highway Projects, Construction Projects, Plans and Studies. Search for a project. I put in 97 and they do have project pages there, summary of work and things like that. So if you go to the Min dot website, they do have project pages for all of their construction projects.
Is there anything else or does anyone want to move to item number 12? I certainly will entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Batty?
I move to adjourn.
Oh, second, is there, there's no discussion on that? Karen, can you please take a roll call vote, please? Karen, Karen, you're on mute.
Commissioner Young?
Hi.
Commissioner Keen?
Hi.
Commissioner Brink?
Hi.
Commissioner Miller?
Hi.
Commissioner Batty?
Hi.
And Chair Langness, sorry.
Hi, motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a great 4th of July, everyone.
You, too.